It looks like, it looks like they're going to sell money inside the air or trash. That's all part of it, yeah. Well, that is something, they almost had that incident because somebody gets in there. Well, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, you could have put it in a better place, right? They've got too big this.
Alright, we'll call them in the order of the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's on the sign in sheet. Approval of minutes from February thirteenth.
Alright, hold me, do you see it?
No, it's good.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Good enforcement report related to crack invisible. Jeff called back, he said he wasn't gonna be here tonight. Um, he's hoping to get into the Lindemuth property this week. I'll do the other thing, I will take concern. Check with that, um, they're making progress. You don't know if they're gonna be told where they need to be. And, uh, he did ask the cornship for an application, you know?
No.
No. He was wondering about the cornship to put in an application to the man. Nothing filed yet, but they're working on it. That's all he really had. He didn't say anything about the learning over there, but he just issued a notice of violation.
That's all.
Which is good.
Just good. S E O report. Anything on there that's? Need a discussion? I'm not sure if it's a discussion. I made a motion to attempt a report. My pledge is all in favor. Aye. Police chief, uh, police report. Chief Cole.
Good evening. Activity recap for Richmond Township, two hundred thirty patrol hours and a hundred and eighteen incidents. Twenty crash investigations, issued twenty-nine traffic citations, nineteen hours worth of traffic checks, seven hours of paper, seventy-four traffic stops sold, twenty-two hours of follow-up from a criminal investigator, six and a half hours of court time. You guys have the report in front of you, um, as far as its incidents. The three that I picked were all involved a firearm of some sort. However, only one of them was found not actually being possession of a firearm, the other two were. Everybody was charged in those three incidents. Personnel, part-time officer, Cattodella is back from military leave, he's resumed working shifts, won't need it. Um, I secured funding for approximately nineteen hundred dollars through the Kyle Power League Memorial Fund. I purchased a new ballistic shield for the department with that. And I also requested a grant, one of your requests submitted through AAA and looking for around three thousand dollars from the office sensors, since ours are old and outdated. Uh, we also started planning for the department's annual summer event. That's to be held on June third, more details as we get a little closer. Another thing I want to mention real quick is, uh, I just want to say thank you. You know, we went through the seeking additional personnel staffing for my department. We had an incident last week on Vine Street in the borough, ended up being a barricaded subject. And we were actually able to handle the incident with just our department. I'm not saying that can happen every time, but boy, I was thankful and grateful, um, that we were able to handle it with the current staffing we have, without actually calling another department. So it worked out really well, so. It all worked out good.
Alright, any questions? Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Virginville Fire Company report, motion to approve the be Virginville Fire Company truck payment. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pretty good job. All in favor of that here?
Yeah.
Um, Volna Town Fire Company report, you guys have anything specific you want to ask?
No.
I'm good.
Okay, motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, appointing Jesse Bittler to the zoning hearing board. I'll make that motion. One second. All in favor? Aye. Uh, discuss purchasing a tablet for the township. Robbie, or Jen?
This is, uh, basically for meetings without running back and forth with that. Also with the radar speed sign that we have purchased, that's going to be, uh, essential for us to go and get the data from there and be able to streamline it that way.
Did you get pricey?
Uh, same as I said.
Budget price, probably a hundred dollars. I think we got what we need. I think it'll, it'll come in handy for other applications as well, so. Real good money.
I'm good with that.
Did we, uh, we get the deal done Robbie on the, the sign?
Yeah, it's all in order.
Okay.
So chief, we got a sign like the borough has. You were here for the meeting with the township resident, but I, I think it's, we discussed that it's, you know, maybe just to bring people where, it just slows them down and brings their attention, because sometimes it's, we can move it around, you know, relation or coordination with the area department.
Yeah, I think, I'll get with, I'll get with Robbie once it comes in.
Yeah.
And we can discuss where, where, where would be the most effective, I think. And then, I mean, it'd be nice to collect data too, so if we get complaints, we at least, we can, you know, or, or show that they're not, they're not actual complaints. So I think it's gonna be very handy, it's if money was well spent, I think.
Yeah, versus just having a car out there.
Correct.
Yeah, I make a motion, we purchase a tablet for not to exceed nine hundred.
Yeah, let's say, let's say, I think we're good. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, discuss orders twenty fifteen oh four regarding pension fund retirement age.
We had a meeting on the twenty-fourth of February with Ron Bittner, uh, of Gerard to allow all the employees for the enrollment, we have the enrollment packages. Um, and the current, uh, age for the retirement is sixty-five. There was a discussion as to if someone is lucky enough to be able to retire earlier, to be able to get pension money, like sixty years, you know, under sixty-five. And it was raised as a question as if we could actually reduce that age.
I think the incentive for sixty-five is to get everybody here to work for full retirement. I think that's probably what was done in the first place. I don't know. That's a good question.
We said everything at sixty now. I just checked today and, uh, ours is seventy. I think that's probably the standard. I wouldn't have a problem with sixty as opposed to sixty-five. Do you? I don't know. Frozen pounds on it, I mean.
I think there are. I think there are.
Does he want to reduce the actual, normal age to sixty-five, or did he want to provide a provision for early retirement?
Early retirement.
To keep the sixty?
Well, uh, have the actual retirement age be, uh, I guess early retirement guys, is that what we wanted to do?
So when we said it, when we had a meeting with him, he said that you guys can dictate that age. I guess our plan isn't like a normal 401K where there's a federal guideline as far as, you know, like IRA is fifty-nine and a half, there's other ones that are sixty-one. This, you can kind of pick, so us at least as the road crew, our thought was, if we're gonna, if we can change it and we can make it lower, to me, I didn't see a lot of negatives in that. Do I plan to retire at fifty-five? Probably not. Or sixty? Probably not. But hey, if I can financially do it, hey, that's great for me and it'd be cool to do that. So if we can change that age, I think we would, uh, love it reduced. Whether I'll see retirement at sixty or not, I don't know, but.
Selfishly, that's probably the biggest con. You know what I mean? You have great road guys, you're there in their prime, that sixty to sixty-five, they know everything. Gets you out early, but if they've been here long enough, I guess that's the only con.
But it doesn't force them to leave.
Doesn't force them to leave.
And that's my thing, and.
Maybe it encourages them.
Personally.
Makes it possible.
Yeah, personally, men in my family don't live very long. So if I can retire early, that's what I'm looking for, but, uh, I get it, you don't want to be, I would love fifty-five, that's like a pipe dream, everybody would love that, but, uh, to me, I just didn't see a lot of negatives besides what you're saying, Brian, okay?
And that's just.
Now guys are out the door at fifty-five.
That's just selfish, you know?
And that's twenty years down the road for me, but.
That's only, the only con, and I, I guess I really don't have a problem. No, especially you guys, you'll have thirty years in by then, probably.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thirty-four, so twenty years, I'll have almost thirty years in, and if, if that is possible, that's great, you know? That's the only way, that's the only reason that I, if we're gonna change it, that five years between fifty-five and sixty, a lot can happen in that five years, and God forbid if somebody's got a health issue and, hey, I want to retire early. It'd be great to have that chance to do that, especially if it's not putting anybody else in a bind. You're not paying any penalties. Now Jen said the way it's written that you would physically have to retire. It's not like I'll turn fifty-five and I can keep working and draw from that. You need to physically retire to access your pension, which obviously makes sense. But to me, if, hey, if I'm fifty-six and I'm ready to go, that'd be great. If it's sixty, I'll bond with that also, but, you know, we're gonna change the age.
Win the power ball.
Win the power ball, yeah, I don't, I don't play the power ball.
Could I add years if you wanted to reduce, like, add years of service, so that you don't get somebody coming in here at fifty-five, working five years, your retirement is sixty?
Well, it's, it's not a defined benefit, it's, it's our own personal account, so it's not like, it's not like we're getting anything extra over that lifespan, it's still our personal accounts, that Jen's has her money.
But we still, but we still add fifteen percent.
Correct.
Township.
Correct.
Yes, I don't know.
Yeah, I think fifty-five would be true, I don't know.
Yeah.
Fifty-five to sixty.
I think that's a serious sixty. Alright.
Would it be sixty years plus, like, having to work a certain amount of years before you're eligible?
Yeah, like, but I don't know how, is it, depends on the plan.
It's all your money, so if you started at fifty-eight, you wouldn't have any money, you'd have to quit, and then you'd get what? You know, you would, you wouldn't invest it that much.
So you're three years vested in it.
Oh, so you have three years vested.
Yeah, it's just like a 401K, but we can dictate what that age is.
Right, it's not defined benefit, so it's nothing.
Yeah, it's, it's basically their money.
That's.
It's our contribution.
Right.
It's the best thing, there is only one. One string here. Yeah, I'm okay.
So we, we've shut the motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion if we change it to sixty.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
So, for that period, can it advertise it for next month, or do you want to see it before it gets advertised?
No, I think you can.
I mean, it's, it seems like a pretty simple fix.
Look at it.
I believe so, because it was, I think Sharon did, I think she collected it, but she had to physically stop it this whole time and then she.
Old business. Uh, review revised request for donation for Friends of Fleawood Park. They requested money, but we want to know where it was going to.
Yeah.
It says for money, it's lighting and sound at the man's show.
Yeah.
So what happened, they opened the show, they condemned it?
Before it happened.
In what?
It was condemned.
It was condemned.
Yeah. With tinder, French drapery, rotting. Montsay.
Yeah, must have been.
What I heard, I felt that. I never looked at that close.
No, it wasn't that old.
No, it wasn't. I guess they didn't give us an idea what they were looking for.
It wasn't the last, I thought today.
Yeah, I thought they did.
I don't remember what it was.
No, they didn't give a dollar figure, they would just ask if we could donate, if we would be willing to donate. And our question was, is what would the donation go to?
They have a new structure?
They're both built more.
That's what it says. Fleawood Park wants a, well, Friends of Fleawood Park would like a donation for their park. We don't have any parks in the township. And I think people use the Fleawood Park, they never really asked us for a whole lot of anything. And, and they have spent a ton of money on it with bathrooms and stuff. I don't know what we did, we didn't do anything there, but at least we have permission, I guess, to, I don't know, to get charged, I think it's their sewer. So. I don't know what you guys do. I think if kids were like, they're gonna have their celebration.
Yes, a hundred fifty.
A hundred fifty.
Is that this year?
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem. It's gonna be, sorry. What's the share of them, that's what I guess, you tell me. When do we get to the library, is that there?
Library, library's four thousand bucks, that's, wow, that's with the police deal.
Thousand bucks.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, engineers report. Review for proposals.
We got them this morning. The good news was they got, uh, we got five of them, so basically all.
That is good news.
Most of the companies around here, they're, they're still looking to fill up schedules. Out of those bids, the kind of surprising little bid there was Alan Myers. They weren't just low on base, they did put on the alternate bid too. And there were more than ten percent off of the second bid as well, but. Yeah, the, the estimate I had kind of, I was hyped it, but I was holding it last year. It's tough to see where they're gonna land. But they, they submitted everything they were required to submit, so everybody's bid looked good, they didn't have any wrong numbers. And the total for the base bid and alternate is just under two hundred and fifty-three thousand. The spread was pretty big, we brought it on the boards.
Yes, it was spooky thick.
And, uh, I mean, I was, I was a little surprised, I went conservative on that. Where I had that, that, where I thought the cost of paving was gonna be right around there, but the patches that come in, which we have a lot of them, there was, it was just short of forty bucks per square yard last year. It was about twenty-seven dollars per square yard. The year before, this year, it was, they averaged about seventeen dollars per square yard in the patches, which is incredible. I mean, it's, most of the numbers were only mid twenties anyway, mid, upper twenties, so they're all been pretty good, so.
Does it help them to do it early?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think what I'm seeing, I think a lot of these bidders are getting some work around here, but no one's getting all of it, and everybody's still got a lot of room to fill up a schedule, especially their summer schedule. Yeah, so that's, I, I, from the start, I don't think the paving prices started raising like everybody saw last year. They haven't, they haven't gone up too far yet. I think, I don't know if you've seen some of the plans open after the numbers are, yeah, I think their numbers are staying pretty decent right now, so. But with the little bid with, um, Alan Myers, I mean, they're, they're kind of the new guy in town. I wouldn't say we're a hundred percent familiar with their work, but, um.
So, so is everything in this, like, cutting in the driveways, the whole nine yards? We had issues in the past where they didn't cut the driveways in it.
Yeah, it's, it's spelled out that for the, the, the top coat they put down, they have to cut in, they have to cut paved driveways and the stone driveways, they have to add a little stone to level that out too. Or cut back in a little bit to level that out, so that part's in there. Uh, Virginville, there were some low driveways that we specifically put in some extra milling to make sure that gets put in the way it's supposed to, but, uh. Yeah, this is, a lot of patches on Richmond Road, a lot of patches on Virginville. Some of the smaller roads have patches like school, that one's still, that one's around nine hundred square yards, but some of the smaller, shirey, sure, there's a couple of patches, and then, uh, quite a bit of leveling. Actually, the length of Missoula Church, that one's gonna have the heavier scratch leveling on the, the really bad areas, but to scratch the whole thing. Level that out and give an idea, or take a look at it to see where it lands in the next couple of years to do what, see what we need to do if it needs to be topped or if that'll hold up. So.
So no concerns, I missed anything?
No, and I.
There's a big difference.
I called them and just to make, make sure everything they saw looked good, and they had no problems with it, I wish this.
Yeah, we go off. Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just behind, opposed to HK.
Yeah.
It was HK last year, wasn't it? Okay. Alan Myers didn't do this before.
They didn't last year, I think it was two years ago they got it, maybe three?
It was either two or three years ago, I'm not exactly sure when they got it. They've been back up on this, they're down mostly bucks area.
They, yeah, they have a plant right there on.
Sixty one to sixty one, yeah.
So they get a couple here and there, but they, not very consistent. They're used to Penn dot jobs, so it's a little different with the township jobs, jumping around a little bit and.
Refresh my Ford, what do we have, our budget on this?
Four hundred.
Was it? Four hundred, four hundred?
Yeah.
Geez, so we can work.
Well, I think we're glad that they came in and maybe put that towards next year.
I think. I think, uh, there's, there's room in our contract and a Penn dot contract, however you want to look at it, that any road you do, you can give or take a good ten percent there, and it's still, if that's something, on certain roads where we run into it, there's, there's room to do that. I know Virginville, there's gonna be, uh, we did that for a large amount of patches, but they got, there's probably even more up there. But again, that's a place that even if you're worried just as is, there's still room to be able to add a little if needed, but.
So that's the base and the alternate together, it'd be just award the whole thing.
Hey, I, I, the reason why we should.
Do you wish our office to review the bid bonds and make sure everything was signed appropriately?
Yeah, we can do that, I didn't send those over there, sorry about that, Michelle.
Stay with the, I just typically, when there's a motion that's subject to our review of the, of the bid and subsequent contact, contract documents.
I'll make that motion to award to Alan Myers, subject to those conditions.
So I'll second it.
All in favor? So that tells me that it might not be so gloomy in the construction industry this year, they're that aggressive.
I don't know, it is. It's surprising that it's such good prices right now.
I don't think they caught it, but they, they bet it that way.
Okay, township roof.
That one did not have as much of a turnout. I had one bid from Rainbow Roofing.
Yeah, that's for, first one I got.
And they gave a, they gave a quote for all three of the options. But I think the, uh, the feedback we got was, um, some of the contractors were saying they, they don't exactly look in the newspaper for the advertisement, so by the time we reached out to them to see if or why they weren't gonna bid or if they would, it was almost a little late for them to get everything together. I can't, I can't say without other bids whether or not that's the greatest prices, but I think Pockman and some others, they, they expected to be a little bit cheaper from multiple bids if you got them, but I'm, I'm not in any way a roofing specialist here, so.
Ten thousand square feet. That's a lot of square.
I think there was two companies that requested, they can push this back, but we got it on Thursday or Friday.
Right.
So there really wasn't much time to try to put something out and extend that bid, bid within.
Pockman's was here, was it Thursday or Friday?
Friday.
Friday to measure it, but they didn't have a time, chance to submit anything.
So how does that work? Must we take this bid, can we rebid it? What's the best for the township?
You would have to, I don't think ancillary involved with this. But if your deadline to bid has expired, this is when you have to reject the bids and authorize rebidding.
So we extended it?
Not at this time, though.
So we reject it and rebid.
Yeah, I think that's the way you go.
I'd like to at least see numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to split one.
Yeah, it's a good way to compare it to.
Right.
But shame on this guy for getting in on it, right?
Exactly. Yes, punishing for being.
Punishing for being.
But he can just turn it around, reprint this and send it back, or just change the date on it.
And this doesn't get produced to anyone?
Right, right.
Lock my hand, was anyone thinking?
Right, no, no.
Yeah, I would agree on one bid on this, I don't.
Yeah, I would, I would. That's pretty much what I thought.
Yeah, me too.
We should, we should discuss. Yeah, we should discuss. Correct. Because public knowledge, I said.
Right.
So we'll just do it again for next month?
Okay.
Reject the bid, I think the motion, we reject the bid and rebid it for next month.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? And then if you guys reach out, just make sure that's.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a learning experience to take blame for some of it, usually with the road work, there's people that Scott contacted, obviously that's a much bigger project than people. a much bigger project than people looking for that type of work. I sort of didn't reach out to people as probably as I should have. So that's part of the reason why we didn't get as many bids, but um, we'll have plenty of bids next time, I believe.
Yeah, I made the same assumption, I, I figured you have it advertising paper twice, the guys that want a big project like this are gonna be looking for it since it comes as they're supposed to advertise that kind of thing.
We had a website as well, too, so.
Yeah, a lot of them won't touch it, but this is a public nature.
All right. Okay, you're done, Scott?
Sure, yep.
Solicitors report.
You were provided the summary, the billing account summary for March. It's easy to say, it's short for Friday. How long time did I prepare this for you? The only outstanding issue, I believe the addresses have been corrected, what we were having those issues. So that has now been corrected through Jen's Hard Work and notifications. There's two, three ninety-one park that we had had a pending share sale. We postponed the share sale because it was a foreclosure and there was a real estate share sale scheduled. Uh, we checked today, which is delaying getting it to you today. The bankruptcy was dismissed, I think that was reported last month. The re, the foreclosure has been recommenced, but there's been no share sales scheduled to date. Do you want us to recommence or wait and see what happens with the real estate?
I, I think we should wait and see what happens, I don't think there's a whole lot of...
I said there wasn't a whole lot of value there.
Right, if they're gonna go out there to dismiss the bankruptcy, then I would think that they're gonna share off the rest.
We are in the process of filing the lien you authorized last month. The other one that is in foreclosure is eight ninety-five Pleasant Hill, which is for some reason changed ownership address or name without any type of deed transfer. Uh, so at hands issued two accounts to this address with the same mailing address, without a deed transfer. So there's a total of a thousand dollars eighty-eight owed on this property. Uh, it is in foreclosure, as I mentioned, we couldn't find any bankruptcy to date. They have had a history of filing bankruptcy, but the sheriff has noticed, noted that they are trying to serve them in North Island Lake County. So the sheriff's self, the foreclosure has commenced, but they've not been served yet with that. The, the bank's share of self has been commenced, but the owners have not received.
So the owners are no longer at eight ninety-five Pleasant Hill?
Not, not that we can, not that we're aware of. The mailing address has changed.
Sounds fishy.
Yes.
We're about five fifty-four park route.
Or, uh, once we lean that, if you want us to pursue a civil complaint, we can do that as well.
But those are the ones I'd leave.
We're in the process of laying it, we're not leaving yet. And we will lean eight ninety-five Pleasant Hill for the entire thousand eighty-eight dollars.
You go spray this, huh?
No, because you authorized it last month, the only outstanding issue was the other address regarding the share sale, so we'll hope that is, we'll hold doing. We won't recommence your share sale this time.
Pretty good, though.
I know there has been some discussion about your options regarding contracts with collection of silver mailings who are collections, I don't know if there's any update?
No.
Did you reach out at all to Jennifer or?
I did not, because you had said that you wanted to talk to Chris, yeah.
Yeah, I see him, maybe he's comfortable, but I'll ask.
And just sort of, you'd have to take action with me needing, I believe. And then you were given, uh, we learned through, there's a bill pending. Uh, you got a brief summary about that, how we're monitoring it. That would alter the public notice requirements, as was mentioned, a lot of people don't read the newspaper anymore. So there's a bill to alter how you have to get public notice. Allow it to be done on the website, than other alternative means rather than the newspaper. Um, to do that, if this bill passes, you have to put in the newspaper that you're passing this resolution to alter the way you do it, but that would be a one-time versus every time you have to publish in the newspaper. So we'll monitor and continue to give you updates. And we'll see what the media lobbyists, how strong they are.
So the senate is making deals, but the congress can't even do anything yet because they don't even organize with anything yet. They don't even have committees yet. And they're gonna be democratically controlled, which is probably, this is gonna probably die right where it may end.
Probably gonna go nowhere to her.
For sure.
Unfortunate folks, that'd be a couple hundred bucks over the years.
That would, the newspaper would lose. Is that it?
This is all happened.
Step back engineering, uh, motions, uh, he sent the chapter ninety-four report to Virginville and, um, Molotown.
I looked at your recent electronic version.
Yeah, yeah, me too, I didn't have any questions. I, uh, make a motion, have we approved both?
I'll second.
All in favor? Nothing to mislead us on this?
Brian, so all right, I, I just kinda thought of this, I was just gonna give an update now that the solar farm has started, just kinda give you just a quick, um, they've gotten in there, I'm sure everybody's seen it. They, they started moving dirt. Uh, they're looking to, they put in all their ENS controls that they're supposed to. What they're doing now is working on getting the detention ponds built. And then they're also starting to work at where they're, for lack of their technical terms, the, the onsite transformer pads that they're gonna have, there's, there's a handful of those. They're working on those, um, we did get some complaints really from the immediate property owner downstream. They came in last week. I've spoken with him, our office has spoken with him a few times and, and just trying to get ahead of it because it's gonna be an ongoing thing all spring, summer and fall probably. I reached out to the conservation district to ask them to look into it, they were out twice last week too. I think one is just to check, two was a follow-up because they did get the complaint. So they're, they're, I also got ahold of the foreman and spoke to him, everything that our concerns are. There was actually one thing that we kinda noticed, asked the conservation district, is this okay? And it was kind of a, they were doing two different things to try to quick draw down some of the water. One was the way they were supposed to, the other wasn't, so we got ahead of that. And I mean, our office is trying to stay on top of everything with the conservation district to make sure we're on the same page. Either one needs anything, we can reach out to them, because the dirt and the swale, the amount of water that that bin carries, we're just trying to make sure that doesn't turn into something. Some of the complaints downstream were a little more than what the township is responsible for, it's part of their DEP. So I, I directed them to make sure they're in touch with the conservation district directly, because if there is a concern, they have the right to complain to them. On our end, we're, we're trying to stay on top of it and make sure the contractor is fully aware or looking for what they need to do, but it's moving along, unfortunately it's been wet right now, so it's kind of the worst of it, I think. The one thing that I helped, that will help, they actually tested the soils out there they need for their pond and found out that it's not enough clay, so they're gonna have to import some clay to add to the site. But that'll help make sure what they're putting in the berms for these ponds, somebody's staying on top of that. Their soils, environmental contractors, so. They're basically bringing that in to make sure that what's on the plan and what's spec is gonna get built right. So that, that's good to see them doing that, but it's kind of added a little delay to build the berms up and keep the waters from rushing onto the, into that swale and onto the neighboring properties right now, so. But they're, they have everything in place that they're supposed to, but again, just kind of as it starts moving and if anything comes up, just to keep you guys aware of what's going on and what we're hearing and seeing.
Well, it's just to get that stabilized before they have a five-inch rain there.
Yeah, that's, I think because of...
It's gonna take a disked out all the way down the street.
I think because of last week and right off the bat getting complaints, that's why they're not really moving today and waiting to get everything ready to build that... Build that berm up and try to reduce any more of what they're seeing in or any complaints, so. Again, just kind of wanted to touch on that before moving on, so I forgot to bring that up when it was on there, but...
Yeah, hopefully they get something in there, a stand pipe that'll reduce it, because that's gonna come down there. Which reminds me, did you decide we're gonna do that railroad on the pass or?
Uh, we'll have to go and look at it, I thought there's no sense to do it while they're traveling back and forth through there. I'd maybe wait till they were a little further along.
Okay. Creek, we can do it either way.
But didn't mean to jump in there, just wanted to...
That's good.
Bring an update to...
Tell me while we're on that, it was one, one reason we're here. I don't know if you're in charge or who's in charge, but you would rather be out there pretty often. I've been working with them for a year and a half. It isn't well, working with that company. So if you think they're gonna tell you they're gonna do something, don't assume they're gonna do it. And just tell them right up front, you'll be naive to think that, and that's all I'm gonna say. But somebody better be watching.
Yeah, that was really the, the exercise we went through last week to make sure that that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean it's gonna be a long process for you because it's gonna drag out, but the guy who's in charge of the project is pretty nice and lovingly. But the owners, they're from North Carolina, they come back, just so you're aware of that. We live here, we're, we're gonna be here the rest of our lives, and they don't care. So just be aware.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure that they're doing things correctly.
Well, we're relying on Scott to stay on top of it.
Yeah, right.
I think, uh, well, I think going through what we did the first week there, like I said, and, and he's right, there was two procedures they were doing, they were trying to take out some of that rainwater. One was purged back and the other one, when I told the conservation district, that's the second trip they went out there and had that meeting with them, so. Stand up.
When they're complete, it's gonna reduce the water flow speed.
Oh, substantially.
Yeah, that's, the amount of retention will...
I haven't gotten any since they started, not...
You got that interest early on?
It maybe came a hundred feet, a hundred yards into my field and dissipated, so it was not near like it had been before that. Every time you get a half inch of rain, it would come.
And the conservation did, did talk to you, right? No?
There's gonna be nine acres of retention there now. I mean, it's gonna take a torrential amount of rain, I mean, there's still gonna be times, they're gonna have stand pipes where there's gonna be overflow. I mean, they have to have a, probably a discharge, you know, something, but it's, I would say ninety-five percent of the time we should get next to the water.
I'm, I'm believing you, Sam, and that's why I was involved in this project.
This is a big sewage pond that they're making, with all this amended soils, the idea is that to catch it, I want you to go down.
There's, there's some who don't understand what you're saying, and that's the problem, you're here. But in the end, it is gonna be better than we had it, and it's gonna be better than we're having.
I'm a hundred percent confident, I'm positive.
And that's how I look at it, so I, you know, I don't like to see it, I'm not for it.
Where do I?
But I don't own it, and I realize I have to get on board or I get swept away, so...
But you still have to consider the alternative.
That's exactly right.
Make the best of the situation we have, that's what we try to do.
And that's, that's why I hope, when you guys engineered it and you gave them the exemption to do the whole farm, it gives you more fingers to put into it, and I'm trusting that what you guys are going to write is right. And when, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be better than it was, stormwater wise.
I'm sure it's stormwater wise, huh? That was the goal.
And that's, and to that point, the reduction, the rate, everything is not just what they have to do by our normal ordinance, it's, it's above and beyond.
Yeah, it's way above.
That was part of the give and take when you gave them the extra land, it gives you the chance to put your fingers in. I've been on that side of the chair, I don't know how it works.
Yep.
You know, so I think you guys handle it right way, you're gonna take a lot of heat from some people who don't understand, but when it's all said and done, they're not gonna come and thank you either.
Nope.
So...
Construction will be the hard part, hopefully, in the end.
Yeah. He's right, we just gotta keep an eye on it.
Yeah, just keep an eye on it, just tell them. Bet you all stay thinner. Can I go ahead and say?
And I'm gonna stop.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, monthly road work report, Robbie, anything to add?
I'd like to talk about the road work a little bit more in detail, this is where everybody's listening to. Scott and I talked about adding a certain percentage, I guess you would say. He was gonna check with a fellow from Penda about spreading liquid fuels money, obviously because we're so far under budget. Um, the reason, uh, since Virginville Road, they were just saying maybe twenty-five percent of that road is getting repaired, just because we were at our projected, uh, budget. With that being said, we're gonna look at possibly getting more repair done on Virginville Road. So I don't know how we go about doing that, Scott's gonna look into it a little bit more, but I don't know what I'm trying to say, is that price is gonna go up. I don't know how far up it can go. Say what I mean?
I do. But there's only, with the way it's been, there's only so far you can go.
All right, to stay within, yeah, the percentages of that project and each road, and that's part of what we wanna talk with Penda, municipal service guy, and say, here's what our bid says. Are we comfortable that we go that route? Or there's, there's wiggle room to say, hey, we can use more patches than that on Virginville, or at least just for that road. Can we use the liquid fuels on the other road and get the, get the number of patches that we want to finish off the road? Are you okay with us going that way? Because that's, a lot of the times the liquid fuels approvals, if you're spending two hundred thousand dollars and you had everything for two hundred thousand dollars covered and done for pendant specs, they're good. But we wanna make sure we get that approved, but I think right now if it's, we got two sixty, I mean, you could, you can easily jump up another thirty thousand dollars, but maybe even forty, forty-five or something, but I just wanna make sure everybody's on board with doing that.
Yeah, we want it fixed right.
I think it makes sense to do it that way.
We want it fixed right, but that's, we wanna, when you bid something in the future, make sure it's bid to fix it correct. No matter what the budget is, if we gotta cut back on the road, then that's what you gotta do. So when we go at this, that it's fixed correctly.
See, I think what Robbie's saying, that's what they get to approve, that there's room beyond that on, on Virginville Road that needs attention.
Right.
Relatively soon, and there might be some wisdom at this point if we have a little bunch of money to do that.
For sure.
And I'd be fine with that. Because now it's cheaper when there's air.
There's definitely gonna be more work to be done on Virginville, even if we get those patches done. Eventually a lot of it will be surfaced, and there was just, there was, there was no way to get it all done in one.
Right.
So to try to get the extra patches, if we can get all that done, that'd be huge if we can. And, and I think there is room to do that, like Robbie's saying, but we're trying to see where we can go on that. Ceiling number, make sure that everything's okay.
Yeah, no, we're good.
I think we're looking good, Chris and Michelle.
Well, we'll just say Chris next month, Michelle said it was okay. We're good. Anything else, Robbie?
No, that's pretty much it.
Our work looks good, I inspected it.
It's good, man.
It's gonna be nice.
Yeah, we're a little slow this winter, obviously, so we decided to do ourselves.
I didn't look, but your snow budget must be perfect, I shouldn't even say it, because it's coming. Your snow budget should be pretty good this year.
Yeah, we did, so I'll, I'll put more than five times, something like that.
They can always be mad at the end.
Yep.
Getting over to...
For sure. Okay, payment of bills.
Okay, in the general file, we have check numbers one oh eight forty to one oh eight seventy-five, including EFTs for one hundred fifty thousand eight hundred sixty... Okay, in the general file, we have check numbers one oh eight forty to one oh eight seventy-five, including E F Ts for one hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, we had check number twenty-one twenty for one thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Light fund, we had check number twenty-one fifty-seven for seven hundred seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer fund, check numbers thirty fifty-nine to thirty seventy, including E F Ts for thirty-eight thousand, five hundred ten dollars and fifty-five cents.
Make a motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Espro, check number twenty-one fifty-eight for seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Virginville Fire Espro, check number twenty-one fifty-nine for seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, we did get the liquid fuels money on March first, that was deposited, I have on my sheets there, the amounts that we have gotten in previous year, so it is kind of staying up there, so to speak.
The amount was two hundred and four thousand for the public rate?
Yeah, two hundred and four thousand, I'm sorry.
That's okay, two hundred and four thousand, eight thirty-nine. Twenty nineteen, when everybody was driving, there wasn't as many electric cars, it was two thousand fifteen, went down to two thousand eleven, one ninety-five during the pandemic, and then last year was one ninety-nine. So we're. Back up a little bit.
I did have a webinar, uh, where they had discussed digitizing municipal records. Not everyone has to do it, uh, a lot of people don't have organization at the townships where some of the maps, paperwork, records are in pieces, it's all outdated. A lot of people are doing digitizing of records, um, right now, I don't see that there's anything crumbling, everything is very well maintained, very well taken care of. I don't know if that's something that you guys would be interested in, if we wanted to quotes on that, or just leave it the way it is.
Did they discuss the record retention policy at the state in doing that?
Yeah, and basically, um, the only items they're asking, that if you do want to do the digitizing, is stuff that's going to remain, uh, for life, it's going to be on there.
The ones that under the policy have to retain permanently.
Yes, yes.
Like minutes.
Exactly, yes. So if there's, um, like the, the financial records, those can be destroyed after seven years.
Yes.
Those you would not want to digitize, because those you would have to go back in there and remove, they want more permanent records to be saved. So if that's something that you guys are interested in, we can get quotes on that.
Do we have a space issue?
Not at the moment.
It's okay, I think, that would be my consideration, run out of space, and store all this documentation, but I think we're still okay.
Are you doing annual resolutions to dispose of records?
Yes, yes.
I guess the procedures, like come in, they scan everything?
Yes, or they, um, subbed it out to other companies, like, uh, I don't know if Staples does it or anything, or Kinko's, if they go in, like for the larger maps, having to scan those and
Yeah.
distributing those, they said it, it's hard if they have, a lot of townships are doing that, but they have three or four people that are doing it. And unfortunately, they said some of them are, you have three different people naming them three different things, and you have all, you know, mass sorts of different files, and no one can find anything, so.
I like the, they had a lot of help in there.
Right.
So I can also.
Okay. One of the things I did have on the agenda, but I took it off, because I had, uh, spoken to, um, Hunter Aaron's over at Maiden Creek regarding recycling. They were on board with it, but their recycling, uh, they have a contract with Mascarot, uh, picking up the bins and taking recycling out. Um, their contract expires in twenty twenty-four, so right now, for them to add us to the contract is kind of a would be a, a longer process than what I guess they're intending to do. I did reach out to Mascarot, um, I did have a, just a copy here of the recycling that they permit, I don't know if this is something you guys would be interested in, to have a container here. Uh, Mascarot would do a weekly pickup, um, and it would be, we can get containers anywhere from two, three, four, six, or eight yard container for a weekly pickup. Um, it's, would not be any sorting at all, just dump all the recycles into one bin, and it would be, depending on the size of container, anywhere from two hundred twenty-five dollars to three hundred two dollars per month for us to have us collect recyclables for the residents, if that's something that we want to maintain.
I really, I really like to do that sometime.
Yeah, I think that, I think the residents really miss the recycling, it's the same what the county did here, but I get it. That doesn't seem overly, and I think there's probably some recycling rate money we can get back.
Right.
My biggest downside, just like the tires, they come and dump trash, and you'll have one resident screw it up for everybody.
Right.
We do have cameras. That's my only downside.
But, but now if we do it here, can, will we get in twenty-four, then will we get in with Maiden Creek, is that, I see it's a five year.
It is a five year, if we would decide to do this, we would be on contract for five years with Mascarot.
But would it stay here, or would it go?
It would stay here.
Okay.
If we, if we sign up with this.
If we do something with Maiden Creek, we're gonna have to have key cards, correct?
Correct.
But that's more, that's an addition, that's yard waste as well with.
That would be yard waste as well with them.
With the Wiki.
Correct, I have not reached out to the Wiki yet.
They're gonna, they're gonna collect down there at the, where they're doing this, correct, with the key card?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Maiden Creek, the yard waste, they're gonna collect down behind the new redners, right?
Yes, yes.
But, but you go in, you can dump either. Yeah, I don't know how it works.
At Maiden Creek, you can dump either, but right now, they're on contracts with both of them, that we can't get into right now.
Right, so I guess that's what I'm wondering, if you eventually get down, if that then.
But do we wanna get down, they're gonna charge you something.
I don't know, I just, I'm just throwing it out there.
They, they won't give me any numbers yet, because they said the contract is.
I'm just wondering if we have it here for five years, we're paying for it here, and then we get cart, and you can do it down there, would that be?
But maybe we wouldn't do it down there, maybe we just do it here, what's the cost, but I would guess it's gonna be similar.
Oh, okay, yeah, we could, you're right, I didn't think, I just thought we were gonna.
And I can reach out to the Wiki to see what they do with yard waste and stuff, and see if that would be an option, but this was the first one, I talked to him today, and he got back to you right away with it.
I, I didn't know what the intention was to partner with Maiden Creek or have our own here, I guess.
Well, it wasn't a partner with Maiden Creek, I didn't know they offered it.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Especially that, that's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Right.
The other thing too, is you gotta be careful with it, all our neighbors stopped it, so we're gonna pay for every township. That's the hard part, you're right, I agree a hundred percent.
With the tires. You do that with the tires.
But it doesn't really cost us anything.
Correct.
This will cost us, the bins will fill up quicker.
And they did, and we had that before, and we know we had that before.
I mean, I agree with the program, I understand, I'm just throwing that out.
I know, it creates, but I, I think after we shut down the county, like not taking it over, I, I don't know that that was a bad thing that we shut that down, because I think this is just much better, instead of having a truck and hauling away. You are, that's what we had before, we were collecting for all the other townships.
Because some people love the program, so they wanna be involved, they wanna recycle, so they will look and say, hey, Richmond's, it'll get around, and they will bring it.
My number one complaint.
Yep.
From the residents, are you, we're gonna do recycling.
Right, I hear, that's probably.
And we can see the trash along the roads in our fields, there's no recycling, it's there. So at what point do we say, hey, it's just a great program, we're gonna.
Bite the bullet, three thousand bucks a year.
I'm with you with that.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. But eight yards a week. I'm gonna make a fill up too.
Yes.
You just don't know.
You don't know, I'm, you know, you'd have to.
And it's a five year, because once you're in, you can't get out. I wonder if they do a test program just for a year? They charge a little more.
I think you do a year, because they, you gotta read the contract, they might up it. A lot of companies do that.
Have to look at it, I don't think they lock it up.
Make sure you read it real good.
Yeah.
Nothing that comes, eight hundred bucks in six months.
Right.
That'll take the fun out of it.
That would take the fun out of it.
Yeah.
Would take the fun out of it.
But I would do it.
That's one thing I regret not having.
Yeah, me too.
It's a good thing, it's just a matter of how you control it, or how, how much does your residents wanna pay for everybody else's recycling?
Correct.
But it's a good thing.
Like, we have to keep in mind, some of the other townships have programs now that they didn't have that, so there's other places to go with it. But I know the local people, especially the elderly population, they really liked having those boxes.
They did like it.
Because it's easy to get in and out, they can do it any day.
Yeah.
But I think we should really take a serious look at that again.
Reach out to them and just say, can we just have a pilot program for one year?
Okay.
What would that cost?
Okay.
But I, I, the garbage thing is just.
We can find out from the Wiki too, if they're interested in maybe putting this, uh, station here, similar to what they have.
Okay.
Robbie, are you interested in? Not necessarily.
Max and Tommy, they have a pretty much a full yard waste recycling thing, they did a big grant, I think, a couple of years ago, they bought some equipment with it, they got a tub grinder to make mulch. And, um, I don't wanna say that they complain about it, but it's quite a nuisance, um, but it's what it is. I don't know if they have cardboard or anything, uh, I know they have containers, like, uh, containers you put plastic in, stuff like that, and it was part of the program, but I don't know anything about cardboard. So.
Yeah, residents can come in, pick up the mulch for free, and it goes.
Yeah.
But they gotta be a lot than Robbie does.
But.
So maybe we should let them take our yard waste and we take their recycling.
But the Wiki takes the yard, but we wouldn't have to deal with the yard waste, right?
Right.
So we're down here, I have to find your.
Well, that's, that's what they did when they were down here across from Smithville.
Yeah, well, they're in Maiden Creek township too, so maybe that's why, give and take is not pretty bad.
I don't know, yeah, it could be worth it, yeah.
What were the sizes of dumpster, Ken?
Up to eight yards.
Two, three, four, six, and eight yard containers.
What's the size of your standard roll-off dumpster?
Forty yard.
Huh?
Forty yard, let's see, four five.
The, the dumpsters that we had here are probably anywhere from twenty to thirty yard. So.
Forty, thirty, at thirty.
What she is referring to is.
Twenty, thirties, and forties.
For the volume, for the volume that came here, is probably way too small.
What was the volume, but they didn't pick up every week, did they? That was like one yard.
Depends when they come.
Depends, oh, now you're bringing it back, Robbie, now we got, why we got rid of it?
That's the problem, is it's so inconsistent, and it's, it's gonna, if it happens, it's gonna have to have a fence, not on all four sides, but it's gonna have to have a fence so that the wind doesn't take the trash, not the cardboard, it needs to, needs to stay contained, because that's one of the other problems we had before.
Oh, yeah, but it's on the top, and they pick it up, they can put this and this and.
Well, not everybody closes the lid.
Well, it's four.
That's the problem.
And I'll just throw it on the ground.
That's what I mean, so it just needs to be done properly.
A larger one?
Sure.
Because I, I don't think that's gonna meet our needs.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say.
Seven foot high one, they won't be able to put it in.
Well, it depends on the dumpster, if it seals up top, they're smaller, and they have the sliding.
Swat.
And I wanna say that that's probably the twenty to thirty, twenty to thirty yard dumpster.
They're gonna be out there.
You wanna punch out and go home.
Yeah.
Not your sixty.
What, what, what meaning is it Robbie's gonna be here, and then we'll have to.
Fifty-three and then, right?
He's not sixty, man, he's got.
Yeah, he's fifty-nine, he's out.
Well, we basically have to hear, we just wait, if these options don't work, wait, and then wait till, maybe make till twenty-four, till they're done with.
Yeah, there's still gonna be a cost down there, that people are gonna have to run down there, but.
Oh, no, but then we don't.
They're gonna have to deal with it.
We don't have to deal with it, if it's, if they're gonna be truly measured.
All right, anything else, Ken?
Nope, that's it.
Um, chairman's report, I, the only thing I have to report, the Berks County Planning Commission had a meeting over on the twenty-eighth at the Grand Central Cap. Um, basically talk about future development, zoning, working with the neighbors, neighboring townships to try and come up with something uniform and updated. You know, the realtors were there, they want more housing, they say we're so short of housing, and my point that I brought up is I would like to know, and they brought up too, with this, will it press development? The amount of tax revenue it's gonna generate, plus the cost per kid, I wonder if it's a negative effect, the housing development, and those are really good, nice houses. So I reached out to Fleetwood to try and get that information, I'm bringing that back, just so we can have an idea, because I always think it's a development is a negative effect versus commercial development or industry. So that was the only thing that came out of it, it was a good meeting, but you know, it's, it's, you know, the realtors, there's not enough houses, there's not enough houses, but it just.
Everybody has their own special interest.
Correct, everybody has their own special interest, and I just think it's a negative draw here. But I'll get that information, so I'm, I'm interested to know what that development generates for the school, I'll get that tax information, how many kids come out of there, what it costs per kid, right? Years ago, it was fourteen thousand a kid, I'm sure now it's probably twenty-five thousand.
Doesn't reach anymore.
Right, so, I mean, that's just to see, and I said, before you guys wanna push developments on municipalities, you gotta get the school board on board to get, or, or funding for the schools to get a better way than just real estate taxes, because it's not, it's not something that we're interested in. So that was my only, my only, uh, with them guys. So, any part of participation from the floor?
I have a couple of questions. One, the, one goes back to your other question, you guys were talking about as far as advertising, I think maybe it would be possible to go to Pat's and say, hey, look, this is becoming an issue in every township, do you wanna go to sell municipal trucks and whatnot, who reads the newspaper?
Yeah.
Who, who knows this stuff, I mean, nobody reads, it's, we're way behind when it comes to that part of it, so I didn't know, I, I agree with you guys, it's a problem.
And I think the Senate, and I think the Senate is for the push, but, and the, the Congress, they don't even have, they don't even have committees yet, that's how bad it is, and it's, it's special interest there.
I said, I know Pat says any lobbying and whatnot, but it, it is an issue that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
It was brought to our attention through their magazines, through their order of the Senate bill, so I'm sure they're gonna push something through.
Second thing I had was the zoning hearing board, we got a met for a long, long time, we lost our chairman, we switched attorneys, I wouldn't run too long. I mean, we allowed, or do we need to advertise a meeting if we were to hold a, just a short meeting to organize?
Organize.
Uh, meet people, we, the newest solicitor, Howie, likes to run a meeting, we, I mean, even if I was chairman or not chairman, I have no, I mean, I don't.
Right.
You would have to advertise it, but you could hold just a meeting, uh, I took over another municipality last year, and that's exactly what I did, I held a meeting, so I could meet the members go over how I handle hearings and things like that.
Because we have a new member who's never been on anything, and.
Right, and you don't have a chairman now?
No, and then we were supposed to have maybe two meetings in one night, the first night, we're like, oh, I'm like, oh my God, everybody, this is, this would be a disaster.
Right, so I'd be very much for that.
It's probably gonna cost some money, but I don't know if the other guys are willing, but I was just throwing that out at you guys.
I think you should have an organized, an organizational meeting, you know, and then meet the attorney too, so you get on the same page, that's a wonderful idea.
And even go over some of the zoning, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Right.
And for you guys to even give us some information, what, again, like, like the planning commission in Berks County, what do we want? What do we wanna allow into some of our areas, because some of that stuff is easy when it comes, it's a setback, or it's a whatever, but then there's some that's a whole lot more involved, and.
And it's the unknown that's coming, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that, that one there, there's another one coming that we all know is coming, and, and if you look at the whole situation, it's gonna change the whole R A one district if we go down that route. I mean, we got people now renting out buildings that aren't even living in a township, so what? I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm not just from a zoning hearing board person, I'm asking my, my guys up front here, that is this what we want? If it is, then we know how to, to adjust, but if not, it would probably be a lot nicer to have some input on some of those, to know in what direction, what potential to go. Do you want zoning, or do we not want zoning? And that's what comes out.
To be cautious, because they're independent.
Right, you guys are independent, we can give yours.
Well, you can give your opinion, but.
Opinion.
Opinions don't mean much.
But we need to know a little bit, like, we're all working together, I think, as a, as a body, put on a board to represent our residents. And how is, we want this township to look, and does zoning mean anything, or does it not? And at what point do we say, hey, it's just too big for that zoning, you gotta look elsewhere. The other thing I want to say is, thank you, I think you guys have always did a good job, you presented your minute, your bills, you presented them, that you said the amounts, you voted on each one. You presented them, you said the amounts, you voted on each one. I was at a meeting the other night where they said, well, they made a motion to pass, pay the bills as presented. I'm sitting there as a taxpayer, saying, what the hell just happened? What did they pay, and how much money did they spend? So, you know, I'll open, open like you guys do. I really appreciate that.
And we try to do that, and be as transparent as possible. Sometimes, even like the fuel packs, sometimes we don't even think about it, because we're reading it. Probably needs to know what it costs. You know, this, this, it costs a ton of money.
Those residents had no idea what they pay your house.
None.
I mean, they said, I mean, dump that. So, kudos to you guys for being as transparent as you can.
Yeah, so how do we, well, how do we precipit, uh, get this, get this meeting?
Have a reorganizational meeting.
Yeah, for the, for the zoning hearing board. How do we go about that?
I would just reach out to, I think, Mr. Allicker, if you're new to the hearing board.
Yep.
Get some dates from him, get some dates from the zoning hearing board members, and just advertise it as a reorganizational meeting.
And that wants to be what, two weeks, or fourteen days, or thirteen?
I don't think it has to meet those requirements, because you're not hearing anything if you're just meeting. I would probably do a week on the courtesy, but as a special meeting, you could do a shorter twenty-four hour. But I think a week would be a better, sooner the better is always better, but.
I think, reach out to Mr. Allicker. Tell him what our plan is, you know, what the request is, and give all the zoning hearing board members, and then say, this is what would be a good idea.
It has their information. They're ready to vote.
Right, and the township supports this.
Okay.
I'm just confirming who's gonna run the ad, or you, or she, or.
I think I'll be prepared for Justin.
Yeah, I mean, he's coming in blind, and we don't even know what's going on.
And the zoning, and the zoning rules, Jen, a copy of that for everybody.
Sure.
And, and to your point, what, what we want this township to look like, I think, how we appoint like-minded people, because we think we're all on the same page. I think that's sort of a guide to how things should be.
I mean, we have zoning for a reason.
Very important.
At some point, you know, some of these, you know, our ag industry is tough to make a living with the prices we're going. So you give them the leniency to have an ag business or do something to make a little bit of aside. When, when you say, okay, it's too big, or when you say, hey, this revenue isn't even coming back to the farm.
Would you guys review all the zoning hearing board applications? I know your planning commission does.
Yeah.
So that's, you would get their feedback?
That's our opportunity, but there's also, I think, some times we have to, doesn't make sense to look at the zoning and make sure it fits what we're doing, instead of having to approve everything, or, but that's sort of the catch, to, to, to catch things that, that don't make sense. And that's.
Setback to one thing. There's a, but when you're talking about something that could come down the road, that, you know, if you grant it and have two of, two, almost like, let's say, you have a non-conforming uses on the same property, is that okay?
What was last in the zoning ordinance? It's been recent, or I think ten years, I think. I think, I think what I said to you is, I want to say it's like ten years if you did your zoning ordinance. If it's something you want to take a look at, or your planning commission wants to take a look at, if there's, you know, if you're aware of issues that are repeated issues, that do they want to maybe take a look at changing them now?
I'm just, some of the big, big things.
There's some challenges coming.
Yeah, and it's gonna change, has a chance to change our whole RA one district forever. Because once you do one.
Yep, yep.
The door's open, and it's gonna change.
Correct.
If we want our RA one district to look a certain way, or, or C one, or whatever, it would be nice to know that we're all looking at it the same way, because we want to do what's right for our residents, both on the other side of the table and this side of the table, but we want to be fair, because we're gonna open up a door if it changes forever.
Correct. I agree.
Twenty thirteen was the last update. Twenty eleven is the date of the order.
Okay.
Twenty eleven, did you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
So if you see, if you think there's gonna be issues, if it's something you want to look at, you have the planning commission to look at and bring back to you.
So actually, you have your meeting, if there's things you want to bring back to us, and we'll reach out to the planning commission, too. So is there anything that we can do?
Or if we, something that should be looked at to change one way or the other, you're okay with our feedback?
Absolutely.
The other thing when you have the meeting is, you referenced having the zoning ordinance. If you want, I can provide a copy of the zoning municipal planning code sections that govern how they run for the new member at least, RA minimum. So just to write the zone, that's what I, when, when I went in as the new solicitor for zoning hearing board for my reorganization meeting, I went over, this is how I run a meeting, these are the rules you have to run them under.
It'd probably be good for all of us.
I could provide it to Jen, and, I mean, Alex is a good attorney. I know Mr. Allicker, but that way, I can provide it to Jen. You can ask Mr. Allicker if he wants, I want someone to toes, but if he wants to share the one.
Because we were, we were set in our ways like Mr. Hat, with how we ran a meeting, and he may be totally opposite. I don't even know the.
And that, and that you guys understand, you're an autonomous board, and you guys have say.
Yeah.
What you decide goes. So we can put input, but you guys are centers from us. So that everybody knows what their role and what, how impacts. Because it is an important part of this township. That's why it took so long to fill it.
There's a reason why people move into certain areas of the townships, because they don't want X. They like X, X works for them. But if we start letting it all mix, we don't have something.
Right.
And how do we say, so?
Correct.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea.
And I think maybe the planning commission ought to consider something where similar.
Yeah, put their minds together. So something that needs to be changed. Two thousand eleven, it's twelve years. Things change. Everybody be looking at something differently. Allowing something or not allowing something, becoming a pain, but to these people and why, look at it. Just throwing it out there.
You do have a preseason meeting scheduled, so if you want to ask them if they had any comments?
I would.
So who's, who's, who goes that? Is that you?
I'll frame this.
Yeah, put it out there. Just say, hey, is there anything that we should be looking at?
Okay.
As far as law changes and big things that are coming, you guys, we have updated. You've got the solar farm. You've got medical marijuana, and you've got the cell towers covered. So as far as those type of things, I know we made amendments to cover those. But actually, you used, you know, the other uses that you see and deal with routinely during, you know, your daily lives.
All right. Anything else?
Not, I'm making a motion to a chair.
We'll see what Chris thinks the next vacation.